Our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, it's 6:04. We'll open for public input for the next 30 minutes. We have nobody in attendance, so we'll keep moving. Move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from May 20th. Does anyone have any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you. Second? All those in favor? Aye? Sorry, was that for both sets?
Yes.
Yes, okay, both sets. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent administrator reports. Chris?
Yes, you should have in there the calendar approval for next year. We'd need a motion on that.
Just waiting for a load here. Yeah, it's on page 16.
Anybody have any questions about the calendar? One thing I would highlight is that the 23rd is a half day. That is consistent with all the schools this year of December. And that's a half day for students.
Want to share? What is the, I'm just curious about what the Christmas looks like this year?
Much, much smaller than this year.
Okay, just curious. That was a long break. It was great, but.
Only a day and a half.
Yeah, feel like more.
Make a motion to approve. Calendar?
All right, all those in favor? Aye? All right, calendar's approved.
Thank you very much. And the next page is, it should look very similar to the meeting dates and times for this year, so I'd ask for a motion for, to approve the Cooperative School Board meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
All right, thank you, Amy.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, 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 I learned to download. I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Monahan, you're up next. That's what it says.
Okay. Good evening. We wound out the year really, really well. We had a great end of the year. Obviously, we had a really great senior week for our seniors. They had involved in a lot of great activities, you know, behavior was excellent. And we obviously had a great graduation, albeit a little delayed by about 26 hours, but we had a, we had a great day. The student speeches were outstanding as always, and it was a really nice day for, for the kids. Certainly want to thank my administrative assistant, Janice Dekowicz, who is the backbone of that whole operation. It really makes it go. And I certainly want to give one last shout out to Rusty Lister and all his maintenance guys for what they did, not only for our normal setup, but they had the additional pressure of breaking that down Sunday afternoon so we could be up and running for a four o'clock semifinal lacrosse that we did for the NHIA. So it was a lot of work for those guys, and they did a great job and obviously made us proud and for the whole state. We had a great wind up to the weekend, as folks probably know athletically. Our boys' baseball team were state champs. Bruce Joyce and coach and his guys did a great job. Beat Winnicott at 3-1. Always a little better when you beat the Warrior for a state championship. So we're thrilled for that. And I also just want to give mention to our girls' 4x800 relay team. A week ago, they were state champs and set a state record that had been held for about 17 years. And then this past weekend on Saturday down in Connecticut, they were New England champs. And that's Izzy Bremer, Eli Cross, Bree Paterna, and Lexi Paterna. And they'll be heading down to Philadelphia on Friday to run in the Nationals, and hopefully they will get a chance to become All-Americans. They were indoors, so we're really grateful to them. So it's been a great, great year and a great end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. Excuse me, good evening, everyone. Similar situation at CMS. We had a whole variety of end of year activities. Parents were invited into the school, so we had a constant flurry of activity. Some of the highlights include our eighth grade students. They had their field trip to Canobie Lake Park to sort of signify the end of the school year. They had an eighth, eighth grade field day at the Exeter Rec, which is always something that they look forward to. Seventh grade students had their Fun Fest and, which was full of academic games coupled with some physical activity type games. And our sixth grade students have the always enjoyable Greek Olympics, which everyone looks forward to a bunch. I also wanted to add some details about our communication plan for our competency based grading practices that came up at the last board meeting I was at in May. So in August, we'll send out a CMS grading update prior to the start of the school year. That'll also be as part of our student handbook. And that'll include like a FAQ document to address any anticipated questions that folks might have. In September, during our open houses, we'll have a brief in-person overview of the grading scale with instructions on accessing Alma for class grades and report cards. The same information will be shared via email to ensure equitable access for folks who couldn't quite make it to the open house. We'll send out a parent survey that'll, to gather more questions related to the grading system that we can add to the FAQ list. We'll also have students complete a parallel survey during their advisory so we can get input and questions from, from all the stakeholders. Throughout October, we'll have a variety of parent support sessions for folks who need a little bit more guidance on how to access Alma, how to interpret the grades, how to interpret anything on Alma, and to ask about the grading system. And then, of course, throughout my weekly updates and newsletters, I'll include some information in there just to keep people apprised of, of anything that's coming up or any new questions or common questions that people might have. So, you know, our ultimate goal is to have everything be as transparent and supportive of learning as possible and to make sure that every stakeholder knows and understands what we're trying to communicate about student learning.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
Sure.
Any questions?
Just a question. So I think some of the folks who were concerned about the change might not have had some of the background about the value that this new, new system brings. And I just assume as you communicate with them in whatever format, that'll be part of the mission set.
Absolutely.
Because I think once you explain the process and what the objective and how it works, I think it'll be very helpful to make that transition.
Absolutely, yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to first just say thank you to this board and to the boards of all of the five other sending schools for SST. We've just had a really amazing year of collaboration and support for each other, making sure we're doing right by kids. And it really is, Tammy can speak to it, I'm sure, when you get a bunch of people in a room from different, from different districts, it could go sideways real fast, but we have a really amazing group of people who really work hard to make sure that SST is thriving. So I am always very grateful for that. Our end of the year was extremely exciting. We participated in the very first Futures Day at Main Street School on, at the end of May. We had students from SST. All 12 of our programs were represented. We had students who went to Main Street School. We had some high school students who had participated in ELOs here at, at Exeter High School, and they presented to the first and second graders at Main Street School just about their experiences as high school students. And walking around that room that day, I, there were multiple times where I got a little choked up and got goosebumps because it was really, really exciting to hear first graders and second graders asking student, high school students questions and getting excited about what the high school students had to say, but also just seeing how our high school students responded and how patient and, and, and just really truly excited to be there. Everybody was. It was just, it was really electric in the, in the room. So we're really excited about that, and we hope to do that again. We thought it was really special. In addition to that, we had every single one of our programs, our, our second year students, so seniors or underclassmen who have completed a year two program. They all did a gateway presentation, so they had their portfolios and they presented to authentic audiences that included parents, friends. Our year, many of our programs invited year one students to some of these presentations, which was really exciting that year one students could kind of see what that presentation was going to look like. And we also had advisory board members, so members from our community who are on our advisory boards at SST came and, and listened to our students. And our students really talked about their growth over two years. It was also very impressive to hear what our students accomplished over those two years. Every time I hear somebody say that, you know, young people today, blah, 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 but then I sit in a room with high school students who have accomplished a heck of a lot towards their goals, and, and they are, are laser focused on what they want to do when they leave high school. And it's exciting to see them starting to make moves to make those things happen. So I think we're, I think we're in good hands. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is I just got a, I just got an email from Sharon Spooner, who is our school counselor, and she keeps track of how many industry recognized certifications our students earn over the course of a year. And this year, there were 824 industry recognized certifications earned at SST. And I'm super proud of our teachers for making all of those things happen, but the hard work that our students put in to earn those, those credentials. So everything from automotive certifications to our LNA students, our, our education students earn all kinds of certifications at our real world. Like they're gonna, they're, they will get jobs because of these certifications that they've earned. So it's, it's exciting, and I think it's a, a number that's pretty impressive. So those are my, those are my happy things. And then the other thing that I have, I gave Dr. Andruski my list of our tentative overnight trips for next year. If you want to just take a look at that for me. I presented this to you last year for the 2024, '25 school year. This is for the '25, '26 school year. And I'm presenting this to you now because what happens is our students go and compete in competitions, and then if they qualify for Nationals, our timeframe is very tight. So I don't generally have time to come to you as they happen. So I try to get ahead of it and just ask for permission for me to give the okay if we do have students who qualify specifically for Nationals because those are out of state, getting on an airplane, staying in a hotel kind of trips. We, I do also have some trips on there that are right here in New Hampshire that are the state level competitions that our students do stay overnight at. But this is the list of the things that are tentative that our, that our teachers generally would like to attend if, if they can. So just hoping to get some approval on that.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Second. All those in favor? Aye. All set.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing that I left off, I just wanted to thank the whole SAU 16 community. We also had our scholarship night before graduation, and we gave out over $270,000 in scholarships to our kids. And that's, you know, a testament to the generosity of, of the whole SAU. So it was a great night. So I just wanted to thank the community for that.
That's wonderful. Yeah.
Awesome.
All right, Chair's report. The only thing I have is the Wheelwright scholarships. They were announced and, and given out as part of those, the scholarships. So we just need to have a board vote for those scholarships. So I will just, let's see. So we had three scholarships. One was for someone heading to a four-year institution, awarded to Molly Ricchio. One for a two-year institution that was awarded to Leighton Lord, and one for a student entering a trade school, Mark DeValle. I hope I'm not butchering his name. Okay. So we would just need a motion. They've already been, we need to release the funds in order to finalize their scholarships.
I'll make a motion to release the funds.
Thank you.
The Wheelwright scholarship.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? All right. And that's all I had on the Chair's report. So Finance Report, Molly.
Okay, great. So in your board pack is the last of the financials for the year. This time of year, we do start to release a lot of incumbences, so that's why I'll see a big decrease there, especially in the world of special education. There were some additional increases in, mainly in the operations and facilities where they do end of year projects and such. Did anyone have any questions? So right now, the projected underspend on the budget is $590,000, but then with the additional revenue that we received on top of plan, that would look for a projected unassigned fund balance of 1.766 million. But then on top of that, we have the CMS bond closeout of the additional 719,000. So just want to remind everyone that the expenditures less than budget is only 590,000, which is very, 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 very tight for us.
Molly, did we have any fund balance warrants?
Yes, we did. I believe it was.
There should have been two, I think.
I think there were two. I believe one was to a capital trust and the TRF.
Okay, so that was, so we have fund balance to cover that.
Mm-hmm. And I know the one for the capital reserve, the intention is to build it up for the roof above us. And then also, did anyone have any question, further questions on this before we move to food service? So I also did include some information for you in the pack regarding food service, because if you remember last month, the Food Service Director, Jean Pierce, had recommended a price increase. So what the recommendation from Jean was, she says the current pricing for CMS breakfast is $2.50, lunch $3.75, and milk $0.50. And the current pricing for EHS, the high school, is $3 for lunch, $3.85, sorry, $3 for breakfast, $3.85 for lunch, and milk is $0.50. What the, what she's proposing at CMS is breakfast of $2.75, lunch of $4, and milk of $0.60. And the proposal for EHS, the high school, breakfast of $3.25, lunch of $4.10, and milk $0.60. And so I did provide you with some historical food service fund balances so you can see how we built up that fund balance over time. A big part of it does have to do with COVID and the operations that we had during COVID. We also had a spend down plan this year of 167,727, which we have because we had such a high fund balance. And I did attach a copy of that spend down plan in your board pack. So what they say you can have in reserve is approximately three, three months, three months of average cost. And so if we look at that, that would be about $333,000. We took a look at all the final expenditures. Now, this is not set in stone because there might be things that are different than our calculations. But right now, we're projecting the ending, ending fund balance would be three, just slightly higher at 346,000. And then also I included in here, just so you know, across, across the cooperative middle and high school, the total unpaid balances, meaning the students that received a meal that didn't pay for it, was $12,448.95. And that's just a reference point. So this was the recommendation by Jean Pierce, the Food Service Director. And we, if you choose to change the lunch prices, we would need a motion to, of the board to do so. Or if you want to keep them the same, would be your decision.
The lunch prices in here?
The lunch prices are in here. This was, I was reading off an email that Jean had sent Esther that I had printed off and read at the last meeting, but I can read them again if you need to.
It's just more of like following along with the reading of it.
Sure. Do you want me to read the prices again?
I guess. Sorry. Yes, and for me, I, I'm not sure I understand what's happening or what's being asked for. I know that there have been differences year over year, but the spend down plan is because we'll have too much in reserves.
Correct.
And so that's going to be used to offset the cost of lunches for next year, or no?
No, so what.
Nothing to do with it?
So there's a spend down plan currently, the 167,000, which was already spent this year. So that's part of the ending calculation of this year's fund balance.
Okay.
So if we look at where we started, so we finished the '23, '24 year at $500,000, just at the top of the page there.
Yep.
If we look at all the expenditures that we had to date this year and all the revenues that came in to offset it, we would be looking at an, an ending fund balance of 346,000. So it's coming down from the 500.
Okay.
And a big part of the reason why it's coming down is that spend down plan.
Okay, and we're allowed to have, how much? You said about 330,000?
333,000, approximately.
So, and the difference between the two is of what we'll have left and the 333 is?
So the 333 is the guidance they tell you before you get a spend down plan. So a spend down plan is meaning you, you have too much money, you need to spend some of it. So they, they say you should have approximately three months of operating expenses, and that's the $333,000 approximate amount. But we are going to be ending what we project slightly higher than that.
So the, the optics are that we have an excess balance of funds, but we're raising prices?
That, yes, and that was what Amy's question was at the end of the last meeting, and asked me to bring this data for you. And so Jean had recognized the increasing cost of food, the eventual need to replace equipment, because we have some new equipment over there. And so she had recommended it, but it's really the board's decision if you want to move forward with it or not.
And when does this decision have to be made, if you don't mind me asking?
Ideally, it would be tonight, so it could be included in the meal application.
That we send to the families?
That we have to send to the state and all that. The families do meal application, receive free meal.
If we delayed it a month, would that be a problem?
Do we meet?
Is that the last meeting before September?
September. Sorry, sir, with the calendar.
So if you're, if, I know it's the estimated number for the end of year fund balance, if it's
If it's correct, you'll be in another spend-down. I know it'll only be about, be about $15,000.
Yeah, like $10,000.
You'll be in spend-down again. So, that's my concern, is that we still have three months' worth of expenses in, in the bank. And maybe when the new Food Service Director comes in, depending upon how she runs the program, she may or may, you know, change things. I'm just concerned about changing food prices without her input and how she wants to run the program. I, I mean, also, we could run into the problem, has Jean done the PLE tool, which is the equity tool? And it, what did it come out at? Do we have to make an adjustment for the equity tool?
I, I think she was saying because we ended in a positive fund balance.
Do the exception.
Yeah, that we didn't have to do it.
Yeah, so the federal government, you can't claim more in free and reduced lunch than you actually charge. So if you, you know, increase your food prices, you're getting more for a paid lunch than you are getting for a free and reduced lunch. So there's a tool. So, I mean, that's another thing, we're, we're going to have a larger gap, you know, free, free and reduced lunch and our paid lunch. So that's why I'm wondering right now if we really want to go there, so.
Could you go through the prices again? Because I thought-
Sure.
At least for CMS, one of them went down.
The breakfast-
So Jean's email says, "The current pricing for CMS breakfast is $2.50, lunch is $3.75, and milk is $0.50." The proposed for CMS is breakfast going up 25 cents to $2.75, lunch going up 25 cents from, to $4, and milk going up 10 cents to $0.60. At the high school, the current pricing is breakfast is $3, lunch is $3.85, and milk is $0.50. The proposed would be breakfast at $3.25, lunch at $4.10, and milk at $0.60.
So our former food director has a lot of experience, and it, I understand what he's saying about the optics, because it does sound, we've got food left over, and yet we're raising lunch prices. Do you understand why she, is she just, it's just because she sees the price of food going up?
Yeah, and so, she actually helped put together, this was included in your board pack. So, she was saying that a lot of the equipment that was bought for the middle school renovation will start to need to be replaced, because it's not only salaries and the cost of food, it's also the equipment to run the kitchen that's part of this.
Okay.
The cost of food has gone up 1.31% in the current year, and next year's cost is unknown, the increase. And then she also had some considerations for the future here, where we did replace a lot of equipment, and it will be needing replacement in the future. And then, a cost of repairing that equipment continues to rise.
But it means, so I just did some quick math, and the increases, you know, in the order you gave us are 10%, 7%, 20%, 8%, 6%, 20%. So if inflation's running 2.2%, 2.3%, so I, I infer from that that most of the request is related to the, you know, capital equipment, right? That they want to replace equipment? Is that right? Because it doesn't seem, unless these were set so long ago, that the, the price itself is higher, I mean, that's not, those numbers are more accurate compared to the cost when you last changed them, when you last raised them.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I was not involved with Jean when she made the proposal of the numbers.
I mean, I'm not against it. As a general proposition, I would personally be more comfortable learning more before raising the prices on our family.
Sure. Yeah, and we could completely keep it the same, as Amy had mentioned.
I vote for keeping it the same. Let's see what happens.
Can I ask one more question? Like, so how often are we allowed to change the prices of lunch? Is it an, is it all, once we set it, it's that for the whole year?
That's typically how we, we run. We try not to raise it during the middle of the year, we try to raise it at the end of the year, so families can prepare.
Yeah. So I see why she's, if she wants to do it, she has to do it now.
So that's what we've recommended in all of our other districts. The, the quop's the only one that has a paid fund balance. All of our other schools are running in the negatives, so therefore, we have increased our lunch prices at our elementary schools, so that it can offset some of that balance, because that, that negative has to come out of your general fund to make up for the loss in your food, food service fund. So by keeping it the same, would be a very appropriate recommendation for next year, and then we can gather that, that data, and we can actually budget for the equipment in our budgets.
Yeah.
I agree.
So that was my next question, you can, can you pay for your equipment another way?
We could, and you'll still have, as Molly said, over $300,000 in that reserve that could be used as a spend-down going, going further. You cannot, you cannot increase your, your meal price if you have a fun, a positive fund balance. So that is one thing that we, we have to consider.
Yep. I also think that if we are going to talk about this again next year, we should have the Food Services Director here.
Sure.
I thought that she was supposed to be invited to come tonight, so that Molly didn't have to take on all of these-
All the questions.
Yeah.
And I believe she had a personal matter that she had to get to.
So maybe next year, we can have that representation.
Yeah. And, and the new Food Service Director's actually works at a bigger school district, so coming here, it's the first time we say this a lot, that they're coming from a smaller district.
Yeah.
So she has a very good handle of, of this system, and will be able to make the same recommendations.
While we're talking about food services, is there anything the board needs to know about the sprinkler incident?
Sure. A lot of water.
I've seen the videos.
Yeah, so we originally thought it was a fire in there, and so it was responded as if it was a fire, an emergency, and then once the first responders got here, they did an amazing job of containing that, and the way that that kitchen is set up, but it was actually a sprinkler head that had popped. So that has been readjusted, and the temperature was a lot lower than, than it could be, so they've readjusted it, so it's a higher temperature, so it doesn't pop like that again. But the, the facilities crew worked with first responders, they were able to clear us quickly through the health inspector, and then we went to cold lunches. So it was all hands-on deck to serve all of our high school students on the day that Mr. Monahan was practicing graduation with all of our seniors. So they were calling for everyone, they're out practicing with seniors. So it was like the perfect storm, and then the, the ending was fantastic. So that, that was what had happened.
And the kitchen was back up and running really quickly.
Yeah, we were very fortunate, it was contained in one area, and so it was only one sprinkler head. And the way that you have drainage in that kitchen, it, it accommodates for that. So it really did not come out into our cafeteria, it was contained in the kitchen, and it was really over our convection ovens, and luckily, those were working, so those are about $65,000 apiece. So if we didn't, if those weren't working, then we'd say, please use that spend-down to go towards that, that $130,000, we'd have to replace those two convection ovens. As it is, it's a couple circuit breakers through the serving line, and those were, you know, very minimal in cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so consensus seems to be we want to keep meal pricing as is.
Yeah.
Thanks for helping, Molly.
Sure. Anytime.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and anything else on-
Just one last thing, sorry. We're going to be paying the, the remaining bills, so if you could come in and sign manifest, that would be greatly appreciated. Most of them are signed right now, but we, we'll need you this summer.
All right, committee reports. So SAU strategic planning, I don't believe we assigned a board rep to that. I believe that was a problem we had.
Yeah.
So, do we have anybody here that's interested? Is everybody on a board already? Yeah. So I think we got to hit, we got to hit up Joe for this one.
Well, Joe no longer, I believe, is part of this board.
He's not?
No.
Okay. All right, so then-
Joe had to move.
He moved.
Oh, he moved.
Station. Yeah, he moved.
Oh, okay.
We're waiting for a new appointment to this board.
All right, so they'll be on the strategic.
They're fortunate, we're wrapping up, but we'll be doing some stuff, so yeah, we'll get that name, that'd be great.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Brian, policy.
All right, so on pages 23 and 24 of tonight's board packet, you can see the summary prepared by Olivia. Three, or six new policies, one being retired, the three new, the six new policies, three are revisions, three are new, one of them replaces the one being retired. Our last policy committee meeting was sparsely attended, there were two of us, plus Olivia, so not a giant amount of discussion. One issue that did come up was on policy EEAEA about mandatory drug and alcohol testing, that that only applies to contracted carriers, not to parents and other people doing emergency travel for logistical reasons, and it matches the statute. So that was one thing we discussed. But otherwise, as usual, we're responding to either new federal and state rules and regulations, or amended state rules and regulations, federal and state rules and regulations.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to accept the six policies and withdraw the one.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Second. Second. All right, all those in favor? All right. And SST governing board, Tammy.
So we haven't met since, like, we, we met the day before the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't have anything new to report.
All right. Moving right along. Any new business or old business?
Just want to highlight from Dr. Asbell, she did hire four teachers that you've given her permission to hire. She did hire, and in your packet, you do see the resumes, and if there's any questions, be glad to go into non-public to discuss that, but all vetted out, all come highly recommended, three at the middle school and one at the high school. So I didn't know if there's any questions. If not, just wanted to update you on the stat, status of their hiring.
That's great. Go to it.
And the other piece for new businesses, it did pass out in the three-page standalone, you should have a list of the fall coaches that athletic director Claremont provided. No new names on there, you will see just a couple descriptors, there's a couple of stipends being split in different spots, so no difference in, in what was budgeted. And then you'll see in the golf, there's just a, a co-head coach for that, just because of some, some personal reasons of being able to cover matches, and so they felt that was the best way for just next year to cover it that way. But overall, it's, it's pretty similar to what we had this fall.
Do we have a CMS nomination list?
Do not have the CMS nomination list.
We always seem to get that one the meeting after we get the high school?
Yeah.
I don't, do you have, you don't, do you have, I mean, you haven't had an athletic director, kind of, yet. Okay. We'll cut you a little slack.
Bring that person.
And these do start a lot earlier, too. Yeah. Yeah. All right, does anyone have anything that we're going to need to move to non-public on this list, or?
I just, can I make one comment?
Mm-hmm.
I, we saw a note from the Boston Globe of New Hampshire that said that Annie Casey Foundation has listed Rank New Hampshire as the first in the nation overall for child well-being, and one of the big parts of that is education. So I just, you know, hats off. I mean, it's a pretty amazing accomplishment, and we have some remarkable people, so thank you very much. And Mr. Monahan, thanks for your remarkable service. Thank you.
Yeah, and as always, you know, when you look at this list, there's an amazing amount of volunteers here. So, that's, that's pretty remarkable, they come back year after year.
And then the last thing, as a new business-
Do you want us to approve this?
Uh, yes, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Approve as presented.
Second.
Amy, second? Neil?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right.
And then the last thing, I just provided you with correspondence from a outgoing freshman, incoming sophomore, just talking about late start time. So I did talk with Mr. Goethe about that, he will respond to them, just kind of let him know the work that has happened. You know, we had a committee in 2019 presented to this board. A lot of the decisions are based on the governing board from SST, being able to coordinate six schedules from six surrounding towns, not just our own six surrounding towns, is a major impact. So he said he would put something together to respond to the student, give them a chance to meet. But again, just wanted to share with you that there is that, that growing concern, and we don't disagree. If we could start later, we'd definitely look at that.
If you could share that response, I'd be curious to see.
You have, with Bill's response?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I could ask him to share what, what he, our response.
I had some neighbors ask me about the same thing.
Yeah, but I can share, I led up that committee in 2019, and then we also brought it to the SST governing board three years ago, and at that time, they, they denied the request to, to look into a state, late start committee, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I think, Chris, you'd also mentioned that the joint board would probably be a more appropriate place, where it's going to have to be all of the boards agreeing to change start times, so. But we can certainly have that discussion, and if we want to revisit that in the fall and, and give a small presentation on the work that was done, it might be helpful for new families.
Sure. I do want to compliment Mr. Cummings on his writing and advocating as a, as a 10th grader, it's really impressive.
Right. All right.
That is all the new business I had for y'all.
Okay. All right, then we're going to enter into a non-public, that's our next matter.
That is correct.
Under RSA 91A, colon, 32A.
It's actually going to be C.
Oh, C?
I misprinted, sorry.
Come on.
No, I'm sorry.
C.
Would you like to?
Before we go into-
Before we go into non-public, I just wanted to say, Mike, thank you very much for all you've done for our school and our students, and your speech was fantastic at graduation, and we will miss you, and we've appreciated working with you, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Very grateful to the, this board and support, and as I said, I've been real lucky to people I've worked with, and folks who, you know, gave me a chance 23 years ago to come here, and so I'm, I'm very, very grateful, you know. It's a cool saying, you know, you do what you like, you can never work a day in your life, so I've been real lucky, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're going into-
All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 All right.
Drumming.